I have one change. I do not have the minutes of May 8th in your packet.
Okay, so we will table, we will table number five.
And I'll just give a quick update on RSU 21 district meeting.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Motion to approve as the judge has amended?
No.
Second, Tom's, Tom seconded that. All in favor? We now have a public hearing on a special amusement permit for Bentley's Saloon. Anything here to discuss anything about that for the public hearing? Okay, then we'll close that public hearing and open the public hearing for the food truck Great Wave sushi. Anyone here with comments on that one? Then we will close that public hearing. And we will go on to public forum. Public forum is where any members of the public may comment on non-agenda items. Is it on Diane?
Green light on.
Yep, it's on. Yep. Diane Robbins-Mokas. A couple of things. At the last public hearing, you were supposed to move the article, excuse me, the warrant article about Clearview to tonight. But we still haven't even seen what it looks like. So I have a copy of the warrant articles which aren't available. And there's no exhibits available. So we can't even see what you're, we can't even see what you're voting on. We have just plain Jane li- legal language. We haven't even seen what's in these warrant articles yet, which doesn't seem to be very fair. If we have another issue with lack of video and lack of audio, is there some reason why we can't tape those meetings so at least we have a taped, like the audio version like we used to do in the days before we had this? Because those are some pretty important meetings. We have the planning board meeting.
I think you have every right to tape the meeting or videotape it if you so desire. The issue that we had Diane was that we had a mechanic, we had it just a defect and we found out what it was and it, it's just a, the plug got unplugged. And we didn't realize it until after. Now it's plugged in and it should work fine.
Right. But should it happen again and should it break?
Well, we don't have any backup to it. I'm, I'm sorry about that.
We, we probably still don't have our old tape recorder.
Well, you know something, if somebody has lived in this town for 44 years, that's not a good answer for me.
Yeah.
When we're having hearings, as important as these hearings are and these meetings are, and the citizens in this town have said that they want to know what's happening at these meetings. They want to be able to see video and audio. If your stuff is broken down, then you need to find some other way to communicate that to them. Either it's just taping it and just leaving the tape on the thing, but not putting anything at all. I mean, there's nothing for selectmen's meetings since April. Since like mid-April. And then we know that the public hearing and the planning board meetings weren't, one of them broke during that meeting. It happened during that meeting. So I'm just saying that we as citizens, this is why you have the equipment, we as citizens said we wanted to see this. We want to know what's going on even if we can't attend the meetings. And I think just simply saying that you have the right to tape it, that might help me, but it doesn't help the rest of the citizens in this town that have supported wanting to be able to see this online and be able to go to it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you Diane. Do we have a way that we can do when that breaks like that? Do we have a way that we can record and at least be able to upload the audio of the meetings?
No. Number one, it didn't break.
Oh.
Number two, it just got unplugged.
Yeah.
That's it. The, the, the equipment works fine. Now we know what happened.
Yeah.
We will take those steps to ensure that it doesn't happen again.
And, and you know, we, we don't have to provide, it's, it's a nice thing to ha- to do, but we don't have to provide video. We don't have to provide audio. All we need to do by law is provide minutes. But we try to do this and this is something that, you know, nobody could explain. I mean, all of a sudden it happens, right? So I mean, maybe we can look at if, if case something happens, maybe we have some sort of backup in the future, but we didn't do it on purpose. That's for damn sure.
Yeah.
And.
No.
No, but you got to understand Diane, all of a sudden something happened. So, you know.
It happened the week before during the planning board meeting. So the public hearing that went to the planning board meeting, or was it the regular planning board? No, it was, part of it didn't even get taped. So it was broken during their meeting and then it was broken during yours. I'm just saying that this is something that those of us that have lived here for a long time have requested that we want to have access to. And I think like everything else that happens within town hall, you know, if your computers go down, what do you do? You just go home? No, some stuff still has to be done. Town hall still has to stay open. Same thing with meetings. If something happens to our great equipment, we have to find a way to communicate what happened at that meeting because everything that happened on those nights, which are important to a lot of people in this town, is like if you weren't at the meetings, it's lost because there's no record of it.
Good point. Any other items for public forum? And we have tabled the minutes of May 8th because we don't have them. So we will go to committee and board reports and Dan has an RSU report.
Yeah, so last Tuesday? Tuesday before last was district, was the district meeting and all articles that were on the table got voted on. There was a couple of them that were motions were made to, to cut some money back. But all in all, everything got voted on and whatever they initially came up with is what we're going to be voting for this year.
Okay. Thank you. And the manager's report.
Uh, thank you. First off, uh, just to acknowledge, I don't think I've, I may have sent you an email, but effective June 30th, Beth Newcombe is re, will be retiring from her position as tax assessor. Uh, we're in the process now of trying to secure a new assessor to, uh, to take over those duties, but also to assist us and, and at the, at the end of the fiscal year to get ready for the tax commitment for, um, um, and, and set the tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. So, those advertisements are out. They're posted. I've had a few calls. I've had one interview today with an individual who is full-time in another community and lives here in town and indicated to me that regardless of what happens, if we have, if we don't have somebody by July 1, that he's more than happy to come in and, and assist the town in making the transfer of data that's on the Vision website to our Trio website to help us establish that tax commitment. So, there are some people that are stepping forward, but hopefully we'll have somebody on in hired, um, prior to July 1.
Hey, on, on that note, Keith, uh, how was the, um, evaluation coming along? Is that on track? Everything?
They're just about wrapped up all of their, um, all of their field work. As I understand, um, they're now entering data in, uh, adjusting the, uh, assessment tables. And then when, um, Beth comes back from her medical leave, she will then take a, a view of uh, the values in the, um, that have been established by, um, by Vision and then i- if she has to adjust those, obviously, uh, based on whatever, um, part of the neighborhood. She may be in neighborhood criteria or uh, quality of, uh, building construction, so on and so forth. She'll make those necessary adjustments at that point. Uh, then once that's done, uh, those new values will be, um, um, as I understand mailed to the residents who then will have the ability to look at what the new value is established on their, uh, on their property. And then if they dispute or have concerns or questions about that, uh, part of our contract with, uh, Vision is that they will come in. Uh, we'll probably set up this room here so folks can meet with, uh, Vision assessors and review their cards and get an understanding of what's on the cards and why. So, it's as I understand how the process will flow.
Do, do we have, in case we get overwhelmed with stuff, do we have enough time um, in order to get that done and then set the tax rate?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have enough time. But we'll always have enough time to, to do the process. Some people may not be pleased with their new value. And once they go through the voluntary uh, process, if they still debate or, or have concerns, obviously they can file an abatement on that value. Um, and so that process will just continue on. It just doesn't, it doesn't stop because somebody has a question on it. That's all.
Thank you.
Uh, finally, um, I put out another advertisement for entry level public works positions. Uh, pleased to say I have a couple, uh, folks that have already applied. And, uh, both of them obviously luckily at this point are from Arundel. So, um, we'll be interviewing on my vacation next, starting tonight. So, uh, when I get back next week, um, I'll take some time and sit down with these folks and uh, hopefully we can get some people employed. That's all I have.
Okay. Let's move on to the liquor license for Bentley's.
Yeah, as I described before, the, the state has sort of changed this whole process.
Yeah.
I gave to you the application that is submitted now. By Bentley's, they go online, they fill it out, then they, then they email it to us and then along with all their attachments and uh, insurances and who owns what and all those kinds of things. And at this particular point, everything seems to be in, in line uh, with what has been done in the past. And I would, um, I would recommend that the, uh, board approve their liquor license for Bentley's Saloon.
Motion we approved as submitted.
Okay. And Dan's made the motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Phil. Any questions? All in favor? All right. Chris Bentley's.
I'll send this down because there's a, there's a, for us locally, there's a sign please here for the municipal officials to sign. And then the clerk will send the permit.
Yep. Okay. The next one. Food truck application.
No, special amusement permit for Bentley's.
Oh, oh, I didn't even see that. We had two of them. Okay.
Right. Special amusement, uh, permit application is obviously, uh, a local permit. Um, they've provided us the application, um, have provided their, um, their dates of functions, the, the, um, the schematic of the area. Um, this is pretty, pretty similar to what they've done in the past and I would, uh, I would, uh, recommend or make a, uh, a motion in a second to approve their special amusement permit.
Get the dates all squared away this time.
They do.
Yeah.
We have a motion on this? Okay, Tom's made the motion. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Phil seconded that. Any questions? All in favor? All right. Now we'll go on to the food truck application for Great Wave sushi.
I'll send this down so you can sign it. Yes, Great Wave, uh, sushi is a, uh, food truck application. Uh, once again will be on the, the 23rd of May from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Vinegar Hill, um, Music Theater. Um, in the past, we've approved, um, uh, locations for food trucks at Vinegar Hill. I believe that this one is one that's been done in the past and is again requesting for, um, uh, placement there on the 23rd. All the, all payments have been made. All of the information is here. I'd recommend that we, uh, approve and, um, this application.
No conflicts with anybody else?
No, sir.
Cause they're only allowed two, right?
Correct. Right now, the 23rd, Great Wave sushi would be the only one there.
Okay. Make a motion. We accept Great Wave sushi for Arundel food truck application.
Okay. Motion's been made to accept. Do we have a second?
There.
Tom seconded that. Any questions? I will say every time I've gone by that they have had, uh, an event there that I've only ever seen one food truck there at a time. And that's over in their, in the courtyard, over by where the, uh, in front of the building. Yeah. All right. All in favor? Okay. Approval of the annual town meeting warrant.
Uh, yes, I've placed in your packet, um, the work that you've been doing over the sa- past several months in terms of developing the, uh, annual town meeting warrant along with some, uh, attachments. There's been no changes in the votes that were taken, uh, by the budget board and the select board on all the money articles that appear in the, the warrant. We've also added the, um, the ordinance changes particularly, um, from the planning board in terms of fire protection and then, uh, the one in terms of the citizens petition for the street design, construction ordinance. The most important thing would be to, uh, recognize the articles 24, 25, and 26. Um, Article 24 is, as you know, the, um, the request by the homeowners association in Oak Ridge Terrace LLC to approve to, uh, yeah, to make their roads, town roads, which would be Laurel Lane in Oak Ridge Terrace. So that's on your warrant. Exhibit C will be attached to the regu- original document. The second one is in the event, and this is how the article reads. In the event the select board approves the order of discontinuance of a portion of Clearview Drive, shall the town vote pursuant to 23 M RSA subsection 3026 dash A, section four, to approve the order heretofore as exhibit D without award of damages. Again, exhibit D is the exhibit that we will discuss at the public hearing on May 27th. Uh, with regard to whether or not it's going to, to move forward after the public hearing. But this, um, provides, um, the opportunity to have it on the warrant. So if in the future you decide to, to remove it, you certainly can at the, at the, um, at the town meeting. But I think that you have decided to, um, put this on the warrant for, uh, for the voters to decide whether or not they're going to discontinue that cul-de-sac. So, um, that's what it's there for. And it's Article 25. Article 26 uh, says if Article 25 is adopted, shall the town authorize the select board to release or convey its interest in real property on which the discontinuance portion of Clearview Drive is located as shown in the plan, attached as exhibit E, under such terms and in such form as the select board deems in the town's best interests. Again, I've put, um, exhibit E, which is a, the, the updated mapping of the area that shows, um, and this will all be in the town meeting, uh, report, town report. There'll also be handouts for the annual town meeting, um, uh, that folks can look at, um, as well prior to them voting. So, um, that's all there. So, um, I think that answers or provides to you the information that you had discussed at your, your meeting the other evening. Um, I've also been informed if, if you guys move forward with that is to have you sign this notice of discontinuance of Laurel Lane that will be discussed at your May 27th meeting, but has to be sent to the butters. Um, so, uh, the attorneys have asked us to have you folks sign this so we can send it to them. So they know on the 27th, they have the opportunity to come in and discuss that uh, with you folks at that time. The public hearing notice for that meeting, um, is done and will be, um, submitted to the town clerk tomorrow for posting. So everything should be ready for your 27th meeting. If you decide to approve the warrant as presented tonight. I think everything else is pretty well standard. It's been on the warrant before. And again, all the money articles have been addressed.
Couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead. You have some questions?
So Keith, just a couple of questions. Um, so if these two articles that have to do with Clearview, tho- those pass, not an issue. If the article fails, then what happens with the planning board's approval of the subdivision alteration?
I don't think anything happens with it at this particular stage. If you, if, if it goes down a defeat, then you're not give, you, you're not going to, um, uh, get into an agreement with a layout of a new town way. You're going to make that decision based after the actions that are taken on the, on the, um.
So if, if the town votes not to, then we don't move forward.
I wouldn't.
With, with laying out a new road, right?
Correct.
Right. So what happens? So now there's an approved plan with that. What happens with that plan? Does it get documented somewhere that that now doesn't?
I.
Yeah, I don't remember what the conditions were at the planning board.
I think they're on the original, uh, map, the new, the new mapping. And I don't have the big one here, but, I think their condition is on there. Yep.
I don't remember reading it. Yep.
Yeah. So if, if it fails and then, then that because it's, it failed a town meeting, then that, that's no longer approved. There's nothing there.
Yeah, okay.
I, I just wanted to be understandable. Yeah.
Okay. We have a, Diane, you have a question?
Diane Robbins-Mokas. I have a couple. The first one is on Article 4. That was the one that was street designs. So that was in front of you. We were having some kind of a hearing.
We had a special town meeting.
A special town meeting.
Which we had to table that because.
Okay, so you took it off from a special town meeting.
Yep.
And you're adding it.
Back in now with the correct statutory reference.
Thank you very much. All right. You're going to have to have a little patience with me because I'm still a little confused. So this whole packet here is what we pulled from the register of deeds. So this stipulation to modify, to modification and consent decree is definitely recorded. It has lots. It has the measurements. So are you telling me that the, that this is not even where it's supposed to be according to what's registered at the register of deeds?
What?
So Laurel, Laurel Loop.
Yeah.
So there's all this discussion about Laurel Loop and it's not anywhere and no, nothing got done. Then why do I have something signed by the selectmen and do boys saying that this is a done deal?
Because we agreed to modify the plan because he didn't put the
Yep.
cul-de-sac in the correct location.
Right. And then you, and then you recorded it at the registry.
Well, first we negotiated that as I re, I forget how long ago that was.
Oh, there's got a whole bunch of stipulations.
I know. There was a bunch of stuff. I can't remember it all at this point, but, but that's what it was for. So that the, those who, lots were affected by the violations of what was on the plan, uh, could move forward.
Okay. And they did.
Yep, I think.
Um, and the lot, the deeds have specifically the one we're talking about tonight has notations in it about having consent decree. Bringing the same premises conveyed to York and York by warranty deed Marcel recorded register of deeds, but there's also something in here. There should be something in here because it was in the original deed for York. York's original deed had the, had the mention of the consent decree. Trying to see if this one has it in it. I don't know why it wouldn't have gone from one deed to the other. Yeah, being the same premises conveyed to Stephen York, warranty deed to Marcel DuBois, and recorded in the register of deeds 8354. Page 337. 37. They go sideways when they get bigger. 324. 33724. Page 337. So that's York. So this has in it that any portions of the traveled paved road which are not located in the right way of roads is accepted by the town and as shown on the recorded plans must be conveyed to the town. This is recorded. The deeds say that there's a consent decree out there. So I still don't understand what the problem is.
The, the problem is that there was never a conveyance of that cul-de-sac area to the town. And that's on us. We should have followed through. Make sure we got a deed.
Even though this is signed. Even though this is signed-
It's not-
-even though it has the roads on it.
It's not a conveyance.
Okay. So that is a duboy. So duboy should have made sure that that got conveyed.
And they said, we should have followed up.
So there's also, is there not also a rule about if somebody's been maintaining something or using something for X number of years? And does this fall under that?
Does what fall under that?
Does this Laurel Loop fall under this, where the town's been maintaining it, taking care of it?
It, it might, but it, I think the consent agreement takes care of that. And I, if, if-
But you just finished telling me that it doesn't, because it didn't convey the property.
It doesn't convey the property, but it makes note of the, the violations or the errors that were made in the location of the roadways. And yeah, I mean, town's been maintaining it for, what, 40?
Yeah.
Years.
Yeah. And this, this goes right-
We don't, we don't need to go to court over these things, right?
Well, you know something? I don't like to go to court about these things either. But every now and then, there's just something that's just not right. It doesn't seem right, doesn't act right. It doesn't seem to be in line. Now, his property also, according to this consent decree, because we were talking about lot sizes, and I questioned this to you, I questioned it to the planning board. And the town hereby agrees that those lots, 14, 15, and 54, which are reduced in lot size due to the above required conveyance of the sections of traveled paved way, shall retain the status of buildable lots. So if there was some question that those lots were not going to meet those requirements because of this Laurel Loop, then how do we have enough land left over to put a 50-foot road through there? And how are we going to meet those requirements from that?
What the planning board said?
They wouldn't answer.
Oh. That's in their jurisdiction.
Then you might find me in court. Because this is signed by two of the current select board members.
Yeah, I, I signed.
And this is not the first time I've seen this. So there has to be a better process. There has to be a better-
This is a pretty standard process when there are zoning violations or violations of plants. If you can't fix it, you can't move it, it's, you got to undersize-
No, I mean a follow-up process to make sure it gets done.
Well, I said, we, we should have followed up and get it done. But the consent process is something that is used all the time.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
I know that. But usually when a consent agreement is recorded, it's usually done.
Well, most often, it doesn't require any conveyance. The consent is just an agreement by the municipality. We're not going to prosecute for the violation. I mean, I've done dozens of them.
No, and I realize that. But we still needed to make sure that that came-
You're absolutely correct on that.
So we're at, we're at a point to have a motion in a second to accept the annual town meeting warrant as presented.
I will some move that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Phil. Any other discussion? No? All in favor? Okay. There's your town meeting warrant.
Okay, let me send down, we need to sign this and sign the warrant. There's a, there's a spot there. We wanted to turn that over and sign that.
When will the town report books be ready? Any idea?
Now that we, now that we have that done-
Yep.
I'm not sure when the town report books will be ready.
They're usually ready around Memorial Day.
Well, now that this is done, this will get to the printers, along with all the reports and-
Yeah, it was, this was the last piece, right?
Yeah, I, I have some modifications due to the, the spreadsheets that we show in the warrant, but-
Do you have all the reports from all your respective-
I think so.
Yes, you reminded me last week to, to do something. Okay, how about voter or registration hours?
Yes, we have a request from the town clerk to modify the voter registration hours to be in, in tune with their, their regular working hours here at the town hall. And obtain a motion in a second to approve.
Yep.
So move.
Yeah. Diane, you got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Phil seconded that. All in favor? Think that's something we do every year. 27th. That's at 7 o'clock?
Yep. And the, the purpose of it, I'll just read it to you. The purpose will be determine whether they will issue an order to discontinue a portion of the cul-de-sac turnaround at the end of Clearwar, Clearview Drive, and determine damages, if any, will be paid to the abutting property owners.
And we have the payable and payroll warrants. And if you look at the payable warrants, you will see that there are two payments on there to the RSU. The, the difference is one penny. But those two payments finalize our annual amount that we owe to the RSU.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
And Tom seconded that. All right. All in favor? I thought that was funny, that we were off by one penny. And anything else? Any other business?
Motion to adjourn, 7:40 p.m.
And the motion's been made to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Phil seconded that. All in favor? There we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.